Order the October 6, 2025 Regular School Committee Meeting. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, moment of silence. Okay. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. Okay. And the first order of business is approval of minutes from both the September 8th and September 18th, 2025 School Committee Meetings. Is there a motion?
No motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. The warrants report. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2026. Bill warrants for fiscal year 26, on September 4, 2025, for $132,681.70. On September 11, 2025, $107,021.86. On September 18, 2025, $125,892.77. On September 25, 2025, $140,549.54. For payroll warrants for fiscal year 26, on September 12, 2025, $601,547.30. On September 26, 25, $622,420.74. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed are available in the Selectmen's Office for review. Okay. So unfortunately, George Baroud, our student advisory committee representative, could not be here again tonight due to soccer obligations. He is optimistic he'll be here at the next meeting because the soccer season will be over by then. But I do have an update I'll share on his behalf later in the meeting. Now we'll open for public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes, and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment.
I have one thing that was brought to me. I don't know how I'm supposed to address that.
Um...
Do we have the, at the very end, do we have items of interest?
Yeah, you could probably hold it at the end.
Okay.
Questions, recommendations by the committee?
I'll wait till then.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's updates.
All right. Thank you very much. Just on my goals, I presented them at the last meeting, made a few fairly minor revisions from our discussions at the meeting, and resubmitted them back to your folder. And so they've been updated and reshared. The Massachusetts Emergency Response Plan, the MERP, we updated in the summer, this past summer. A huge thank you to Lead Nurse Julie Dietrichson for her work and the work of the nurses, who've spent a lot of time making sure we had a lot of the things that are required within the plan updated, including behavioral health things, as well as student safety, staff safety. Relocated some of the AEDs around the building. I did share it out with the West Bridgewater Police Department, the Fire Department, and the administrators, to make sure there's nothing we were missing. We thank you to Mark Nabrega, our Head of Maintenance, who has moved some of the AEDs around. Some of them were more centrally located within the school, but not really probably the best place in terms of safety in case someone needed them. We want to make sure not only the administration, but the nurse, and any visitor to the building that may be there after hours could easily see where they are. So we wanted to get the high-traffic areas closest to the main entrance, usually was the spot that we chose. We did submit it in September after the meeting, and they are good for every two years. So we'll be resubmitting any changes that go along over the next couple of years.
Sorry, I was slow on the goals then. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we, I know we do the, like, year-end review. Do we do any, like, check-ins in the middle? Or, okay.
Yes, yep, we'll do one in.
Mark, I believe, does like a mid-year self-evaluation, and we give kind of feedback at that point.
Okay, cool.
It's in January, I think?
Yes, I think it's usually January. Perfect. Budget meetings with the town. So we have a scheduled meeting on October 21st. The attendees will be myself, our business manager, we have two school committee members who will be there, our town administrator, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the Finance Committee. We started these now three years ago, so we've had two prior years of meetings. They've gone really well. It's really an opportunity to share information related to not only this year's budget, but planning ahead for next year's budget. Some of the possible talking points we'll talk about, we always talk about our staffing needs, if we've seen any changes in this current year, or things that we're looking to possibly add for next year. Again, the major thing that we want to accomplish by these meetings is to have no surprises with the town. We were going to talk about special education. We've talked about both in-district and out-of-district placements, which make up a decent percentage of our overall budget. Transportation, we'll talk about our transportation needs within the district. School choice, we always budget a certain number depending on our student enrollment at the time. Talk potentially about capital budget items. We'll talk about success we've had with past items that have been funded by the town, and what we're looking to possibly do for next year. We had school choice in there twice, I apologize. And we'll talk about the elementary building project, so get an update there and share out information. It's also a good opportunity for us to ask questions. How's the town, the finances in the town look? What's the revenue look like? What are some of the building projects? So it's very much informal, but it's very beneficial, I think, towards our working relationship. And honestly, I think it's shown dividends at our last couple of years, meetings with both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. The information we shared during this meeting stays pretty consistent when we meet with them in March. So I want to thank the town for being receptive to having these meetings, and we may or may not have another one as we get closer to budget, we'll kind of see how things go, but I don't think it's a bad idea to have a future meeting as well. So thank you to those of you who will be on the committee and meeting with us.
I have a question though, too, sorry. So the fourth bullet, there are opportunities to share information related to school finances and the upcoming budget. Is there like, do we ever do like a check-in on, here's what was approved last year, or here's where we're at the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter? Do we ever do anything like that?
We haven't gotten that specific. We've talked about any major things that have come up that were out of our kind of scope of budget, for example, if we had any major repairs or things like that. But we haven't really broken it down by, you know, that, you know, much detail.
Yeah. So just to, from my perspective, JP, that was something that I learned, and a lot of learning that I went through last year, that really would be best practice to be doing. But in talking with Kathy, we do have some obstacles in terms of the software that is used, and that unfortunately is controlled by the town. So possibly we could have some conversations in these meetings about how...
So, so, just so I understand, so the town selects software, and then the school uses it? That's the blocker?
Right. And I think that's a great talking point. Because we would, the way that we process payroll and bill warrants, it's time-consuming, it's a lot of data entry by our staff, they're doing a lot of this stuff by hand. We don't have, I can defer to Kathy and those, but we don't have great modules that are really user-friendly, and also to gather information. So it's something that I know Kathy's talked with the town about. I think their system drives our system, but we would like to get together and look at something, you know, moving forward. So we do have the ability to pull data much quicker.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should definitely bring that up.
Okay. Great.
Yep.
This is Yanis. Professional Development Plan, where are we at so far this year?
The highlight of the night. So the committee was formed last spring, and we had representatives from elementary and high school. And we feel like we built a strong foundation to support our staff's learning and growth. So in the fall so far, we've had an Alice training at the high school, the middle and senior high school for all staff. And at the elementary level, we had de-escalation training with Elise, our new BCBA. I was at that one, and I'll tell you, it was phenomenal. So in October, we're going to swap, and elementary will have Alice training, and middle and senior high school will have the de-escalation training. In December, John Collins had secured two sessions for AI training, one session geared towards the elementary level, and one session geared for middle and senior high school. And staff-led PD, we have monthly sessions from January to June, and 21 proposals were submitted by staff, and all the proposals align with DESI's guidelines for high-quality PD. And they support at least one of the strategic initiatives, either student success, curriculum, staff development, or facilities and resources. And just to name a few, we have a cross-curricular coordination, which is open to anybody, and they can, they'll be working, especially with Witten Wisdom, there's a lot of cross-curricular activities they can do within Witten Wisdom. So that's one of the topics. A deep dive into Witten Wisdom's deep dive. So a deep dive in Witten Wisdom is their grammar and language component. And there's not really a whole lot of time, Witten Wisdom takes a lot of time. So this is a deep dive into that, and how can they make it more incorporated into their daily lessons. A dyslexia, who, what, where, when, and why. That's being led by the reading specialist, who has been trained in dyslexia. They went to a summer institute last year.
It was a year-long.
A year-long institute, and five teachers went in Keitha. And they came up with a dyslexia plan, so that will be an interesting one. Incorporating movement and teamwork in the classroom, let me tell you, that one's got the most registrants. That is being led by the APE teacher. New tech strategies, including AI, science practices for diverse learners, supporting diverse learners, supporting instruction in the math classroom, topics in early childhood, approaches to play and learning, and then trauma-informed mental health and substance abuse training. That is for the nurses, and Julie Dietrichson's Behavioral Health Grant allowed for a presenter to come in and present to the nurses on that topic. So we've got some really good stuff. At the end, I'll send out a survey and see how the teachers feel it went. But so far, so good, so stay tuned.
Any questions?
And I want to thank you for your leadership and coordinating the group. I think we, this year is a kind of a mix. We did PD that we felt was necessary, excuse me, and from the teachers' perspective, thank you to Officer Packard and Detective Develi for the Alice training, which was really hands-on. I got to hear from the people that covered the office, so our office staff could go down for the training. I talked to a couple of union members today, who felt it was very valuable. In their words, at some points, it was a little bit scary to go through this, but our goal is to train the educators. So if there is an issue, they're well-trained, and they're comfortable in a very uncomfortable situation. So we give them a lot of credit. And I did get over and got to see some of the de-escalation training, and I felt that was also important and helpful. So we're looking forward to the switch, and then we're looking forward to the AI training.
And I think this was a good compromise, the plan where the district held a certain number of PD days, because there are things we have to get done within the district, and then to open up those six other days to the staff for proposals. And there were, there were some that are teetering on whether they'll run or not, but hopefully we had, we put in a stipulation, there has to be at least two attendees plus the presenter. So we were close on a couple, but most of them have well over that amount. So it'll be a good, it'll be a good season.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Okay. Just an update on the competency determination. It backed in November of 2024, when Massachusetts voters voted on ballot question number two to eliminate the use of MCAS, as the graduation requirement, students in grade 10 would take English, math, and science as statewide graduation requirement. It removed that, the new graduation requirement or competency determination is now by each individual district. So we're working to come up with our, what we believe the students should know, and what they should, where they can show competency as they finish 10th grade. It doesn't change the graduation requirements, we still will maintain those, those are still our local independent graduation requirements. Although they do not have to pass the MCAS exams, they will have to take them and sit for them, there is accountability that each district is, the state looks at accountability for each district, so those scores do matter still to us. Again, our draft is in process. It is, doesn't have to be submitted to DESI until December 31st. We hope to have it done much earlier than that. And we are making sure that it will cross around things, School Committee Policy, IKFE. So what's in there is also going to be within our plan. The state is also looking at state graduation requirements, vision of a high school graduate in Massachusetts. So it'll be interesting to see, I think they're going to look at what the competency determinations are for each individual school district, and then they're going to see what they feel is important for all students. But again, it won't take away local control for graduation requirements.
Is this something that we need to, like, review and vote on before it gets submitted?
Yes, yes. Yeah, probably, I'm guessing we'll probably bring it even by November. I think we'll have it done by then. Building project update. We haven't had a lot to update on yet, but we are going to be moving pretty quickly. We have our next school building committee meeting tomorrow night, where we'll be presenting information on the schematic design cost estimates, so that will be out there. We continue to post on Facebook our live feed, newsletters, and through emails. We do have some videos coming, so we have probably three to four different videos that will be produced and sent out. Written recent emails out to families, I sent one last week that had some images looking at the site and the exterior of the building. I've received a couple of emails back. Well, I'm sending one out this week, it's set to probably go middle of the week to talk more about the classroom layout or what it looks like, so people can ask questions or if they have concerns about certain things. So trying to break it down, it's really a lot of stuff I sent previously in one big email, but I'm trying to break it down, allowing people opportunities to ask questions. We want families, staff, and the community members to ask questions. I got a great question over the weekend, having to do with concerns in a neighborhood, a budding neighborhood about water, and what that's going to look like. The short answer on that is, it's probably going to be a lot better, because there are no retention systems currently. So there'll be retention systems throughout the site, which will hopefully keep more water in, therefore improving their, their area of town rather than making it worse. We did recently, a number of us toured Milford, Woodland Elementary School in Milford. It's a little bit older building, about nine years old, but what was interesting was, it was an elementary school of 1,050 students. So it's good to see a school operating, didn't have a large of a grade span, but to see how they did a lot of different things in a building that big. Then we have another school building committee meeting on the 21st of October. On the 23rd, we'll be submitting our schematic design to the MSBA. Our next community forum is set for November 6, unless that changes tomorrow night. And then looking down the road, we're looking at a January 26 date for a potential town meeting, with more likely than not, a ballot vote probably that next Saturday. Again, not set yet. From November to January, we're going to have multiple community forums, presenting a lot of similar information. There won't be a lot of new information, but we'll be doing them in person, and we're talking about doing some virtual ones as well, to get the information out there. So once we have the numbers, we'll also start looking at calculating potential increases in the tax rate.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this, I've gotten a lot of feedback. How much of this is already set versus how much is up for debate? Because I know people are like, oh, well, it should be at Howard. And while the decision has already been made, it's already in, and if they're saying, oh, I'm not voting on it this way, but I'll vote, like, my understanding is, at this point, this is a yes or a no, as is, and I want to make sure that I understand it correctly.
Good, good question. So the answer is yes. They've done the design, the school building committee last April voted on the Rhodes El McDonald site. The Howard site had a few major drawbacks, one...
Oh, I...
Yeah, no, just so people here...
I'm not arguing with that, I just want to make sure that we say, like, people are, oh, I'm going to go, and I'm going to say it should be at the Howard. We're past that, you should have come to those meetings, we're past that decision. We are at a different decision where we are now voting on whether to continue to move forward with the plan we have now. I'm understanding correct.
You are 100% correct. Yeah, and again, major issues with traffic at that site. We're going to show some more traffic numbers. And I come up every morning about the same time Howard's opening, if not before, and the 106 is stopped from the center all the way down, probably to Hockamock, if not beyond. But the other major...
Ride a bus, ride a bus. If you can, ride a bus, ride a bus.
Right. The other major issue with the Howard site, just so people know, is that at that site, we did not have a site to put the wastewater treatment plant. It would not fit on the site, because you've got to build that first. So you couldn't build that, and the school, we would have to find a site off-site. So that was undetermined, and so was the cost of, you know, whether it's town-owned property or buying property. So that was a major unknown to move forward in the project without knowing where we're pumping all that. But yeah, so this, it is, that part is done. The drawings, there's still some room for changes in design development, but the site is pretty set, minus some, you know, minor changes. But good questions, and I'm glad you're asking, and I encourage people, if they have questions, they have concerns, they hear rumors, they're unsure of something, we'll answer every question. If I don't know the answer, I'll pass it along to our architects or our OPM to get them the answer. And they may not like the answer, but we'll make sure they have all the information, so they're informed when they go for a vote. One of the other things we're going to look at, too, is the, what it's going to cost not to do the building project for future maintenance concerns, potential down the road for modular classrooms and so forth, and look at that over a 30-year period and see what the cost is with that. We don't have those yet, but we will. The REEDS Quarterly Report is in your packet. By our bylaws for the collaborative, we give that to each quarter for you to review. And surveys. So just a little history, last year, in the fall, I sent out three Google Form surveys. It was Survey Overload. So this year, we are sending out surveys to families, staff, and students in grades four to 12. It'll be one survey broken into three different parts, which I've shared with you. There'll be the Climate and Culture Survey, which asks questions about the individual schools, as well as superintendent. As part of the Bullying Intervention and Prevention Plan, we have said that every, by the end of October, we'll send out a survey on that. So there's a separate questions about that, it's very similar to the one we sent last year. And the Institutional Self-Evaluation of Educational Programs, that is, will gather information, as the administrative team will look to ensure that we're providing an equitable learning environment. The second two are a lot shorter, the first one is the longest of the three, but the goal is to gather very helpful information. I will send them out by email, I will post information on social media, directing them back to the emails. I think, you know, I'm not planning on posting the surveys on social media, but I will remind people about that. The surveys are completely anonymous, we will make sure we check them again, but the same process we used last year, there is, unless they give us identifying information, we will not know who someone is. Again, looking for information to help our, move our district forward, but there are places that people can put contact information, and that, we encourage that. If they have a question or a concern, or something that we could investigate further, it is really helpful to get the information, and we, administrators or myself or directors will reach out and contact people. It's not required, but it is helpful when trying to, you know, make sure people understand, or for us to get more information. And I will, and probably either, probably by the December meeting, but November, December, do an executive summary that provides information about the, all the information included in the surveys.
Any questions for Mr. Bodwell? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Moving on to new business, the first item is, we have to nominate and vote for a delegate to attend the MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference that happens in November. I believe it's November 12 through 14 this year. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to delegate someone to attend this meeting in November. And I'd like to nominate...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Have fun.
Yeah. I went last year, Mr. Bodwell, it's actually, it's wealth of information, there's some really, really good sessions, and then there's some that are a little drier.
Is that doable for you during the day?
Say that again?
Is that doable for you?
Yeah, it's doable for me, so it makes sense while I'm, while I'm available, so, okay. Shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No opposed. All right, the ayes have it. Moving on to, we need to conduct a revote on the WBEA Secretary's Contract. We voted at our last meeting, but just to cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, we want to be clear about who is voting on the panel. So is there a motion to approve the WBEA Secretaries' Union Contract?
Motion to approve the WBEA Secretary Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I'm standing, I don't know what I do.
And that's all right, I was going to say that next. And any recusals?
There we go.
Okay. So three, four, and one recused. Then, we need to approve, have you had a chance to review, the Career Technical Education, the CTE Middle School Pathway Exploration Plan? It was in the packet for this meeting. It's a voting issue.
So just a quick bit of background, so this is something that DESI had sent out to every district. We're not a CTE school or program, so we have, we had to develop the pathways for our middle school students to ensure that they're having equitable exploration of programs, so really they know what their options are for career and technical education programs. We have to submit it to DESI by the 1st of November. A lot of the things that we're, we put in this plan are things that we were currently doing. There was some tweaking, there were some minor changes, but we're really doing a lot of those. Really, it's to show, give information on how students are learning about the programs, and our guidance and administration are working with the students to discuss the pathways. We have a new person doing the middle school guidance, who's doing a great job, really taking the lead on this. And I think this, the plan really identifies what we're doing and how we're doing it to middle, senior, high school. We, this is a template from the state, so we really worked through the template and collaborated on it, met a few times, discussed it. Mrs. Page met with guidance and talked about what input they had. So it's, it's a plan that I believe is truly bought in by everyone involved, and we are, part of the regulations, we need to post it, so we'll post it, but I think we can help to ensure that our students are getting this information.
Is there a motion to approve the plan?
Motion to approve the CTE Middle School Pathway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. And moving on to the Westbridge Water CPAC update, Mrs. Mayoskovsky.
The mission of the Westbridge Water Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to help build exclusive schools and communities. We support families of students with IEPs and five-year-four plans, and we are also welcomed and include general education for parents by offering advice, advocacy, educational opportunities, and career-building events. Westbridge Water CPAC has officially started our year, and we're looking forward to reconnecting with familiar faces and welcoming new members. Our next meeting will be held here at the Middle, Senior, High School Learning Commons on Tuesday, October 14th at 6:00 p.m. As always, everyone is welcome to attend. This Thursday, October 9th, we will be hosting an information table at Spring Street Schools' Curriculum Night. Please stop by, meet the board, ask questions, and learn more about our work, and join our mailing list so you can stay up to date. We're excited to share that we will be soon accepting applications from student representatives. Students in grades seven through 12 are invited to apply in service lines to a student body and help promote inclusion across the school committee. More information about this opportunity will be available soon to students. Looking ahead, we are pleased to welcome back Christine Riley from Cape Cod, advocate for our first workshop of the year, Basic Rights in Your Child's IPA. This event will take place Thursday, November 18th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Knowledge is power, and this workshop is a great way for families to learn about their legal rights in special education and strategies to advocate efficiently for their children. Sign-up details and Zoom links will be available soon. For more information about Westbridge Water CPAC, Up County events, or to join our mailing list, you can find us on Facebook or email us at any time.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to reports of the subcommittees, we'll start with the Student Outreach to the Student Advisory Committee. I have an update that the student representative, George Baroud, sent to me, so I will read it. It's from his first-person narrator.
"Good evening. I am George Baroud, student representative to the school committee and a junior at the Middle, Senior High School. I'd like to provide an update on recent activities from the student perspective. I am unfortunately unable to attend due to school soccer commitments, but I cannot wait to meet all of you postseason. I'm very pleased to announce that I have noticed a large number of students in clubs, activities, and extracurricular activities, specifically clubs such as the Financial Investment Club, which gained five or six new members, and Model UN and Leo's Clubs doubling their numbers. I'm also excited to announce the amount of hands-on projects students are involved in. Through the Global Citizens Club alone, we have a Hispanic Heritage Month project, a breast cancer awareness project, and a fundraiser for Gaza, which I am a part of. The Leo's Club is also building a memorial rock labyrinth in honor of Mr. Finley. Although, I have talked to many students about changes they would like to see and have gotten some good feedback. One piece of feedback I have received from numerous individuals is the addition of theater as a class, with one student having had to choose between theater and her after-school sport. All members of the Student Advisory Committee unanimously agreed that this was unacceptable. Another change we wanted to make was the addition of more AP classes in the school, specifically AP Psychology, AP Government, and Civics, and other decided additions. I do know of a teacher that is certified for AP Psychology and is willing to teach next year if possible. Finally, I would like to talk about the schedule and how the eight classes with the drop-three schedule would promote classroom hours while still holding the students' interest. I believe that a vote throughout the faculty as well as a vote for the students would be ideal. Thank you for your consideration towards student interests, and I'm looking forward to a very positive year. If you have any questions, never hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you."
So, that was from George. Like I said, he should be here at our next monthly school committee meeting. I met with the five students on the committee last week on Wednesday, and then the four of us this evening met with the four other students aside from George to kind of talk, it was mostly about the items that George mentioned in his update, and I think it was really positive. I think we have some students that are invested in making sure that everything's working best for all parties involved, so you guys have anything you want to share about our meeting, or? No?
No, it's a solid group. They have, they have good concerns and good feedback from the students, so.
Yeah, and I will just say that we established that it was more than one student that was required to choose between theater and a sport, so I think it's something that we hope we can fix going forward.
So, what I think is great is that they have student voice, that they're able to talk to the school committee. I know Mrs. Page has a principals group, I have a superintendents group that's made up of students nine to 12, and I've got a middle school group as well. So, I think it's important to hear, to listen, to see what can be done and what maybe can't be done. And again, have, but have a genuine discussion on it, and providing information back and forth is good because we value their opinion.
Same, same. And then, just the other thing to note, it's kind of adjacent to this committee, one of the students on the Student Advisory Committee is also in SEERSAAC, which is the Southeastern Regional Student Advisory Committee. So, it's a group of students from multiple schools in southeastern Massachusetts, and they're hosting the regional meeting here, is it next week, on the 14th, I believe? Yeah, on October 14th. So, I feel like that's pretty cool, that, the hosting.
We used to have them before COVID, and then they went virtual, so we've been finding solicitors for that. This is a great spot.
We, we love having them here. It's great to get other kids in, and it's great for our kids to see kids, you know, walk in the building, talking to them, so it's exciting. I agree.
I think it's probably much better than virtually because they can actually talk and collaborate and all that. Do you know, Christine, is there a staff member involved in running that?
There's SEERSAAC, yeah, they have two advisors.
Okay.
They work for the state.
Okay, but in the schools, are anyone affiliated with running that, or it's just the state?
Just the council.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Mayoskovsky.
I move to open the following policies to review at our next Policy Subcommittee. Here we go. AA, School District Legal Status. AB, The People and Their School District. AD, Mission Statement, Philosophy Statement. ADC, Tobacco and Smoking on School Premises. ADDA, Background Checks. ADDAR, BCI, GIS, Model Core Policy. ADF, School District Wellness Program. And AB, Commitment to the Purpose. Is there a second?
A second. Any discussion?
These are just making a way through the As for review.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. The ayes have it.
Okay, so I am like to move, accept the following policies as written. EB, Safety Program, and EBC Emergency Plan. Is there a second?
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. EB and EBC, these are two existing policies that were reviewed, and we compared with MACS model policies, and they compared with the district's plans for compliance, so no changes were recommended for these policies.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, so I move to accept the following policies with some small edits. GBEBC, Gifts and Gifts to Insolvent by Staff. JJE, Student Fundraising Activities. KBE, Relations with Parent Booster Organizations. And IKF, Graduation Requirements. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, so, GBEBC, JJE, KBE. Changes to this policy is included just from language to reflect the state law, including banning students and staff from organizing raffles and games of choice, and also requiring booster organizations to comply with the same state laws, and all gifts and donations must be accepted by vote from the school committee. And then, IKF, the policy was updated to reflect current district courses required for graduation and included language among credit for foreign study. So, that was that. Does that one affect cowplop, does they do?
First thing I thought.
Is it? Are they?
Sounds like it would.
I'll have to check. I'm not sure.
We've, chance, right?
Yeah.
We've talked about that, and I think we're trying to get some more clarity on that because...
There's lots of raffles. I mean, we, as a town, hold a lot of raffles. Like, is it financial, like, if it's cash, it's a problem, or is it you can win a ride in a police car to school? Like, where is our line on this? And is it ours or is it the state's?
Well, we also do a 50/50.
No, I mean, we do tons of these, and that's, I mean, I also sit on the PTO. It's how we bring in our money, and it's how the boosters bring in their money, and is this, is this going to limit our fundraising ability and address it? I mean, I know from PTO standpoint, it will.
I'm not sure.
I think with the PTO, as long as you don't involve the students or staff, you might be all right. That's what it says, so you guys just do it.
Right, it's definitely not a competition.
No, but it's a game of chance. Like, is it, it says the organization can't. So, I'm not sure.
But I believe it was making kids be responsible for game of chance.
Okay.
And they're, they're run by adults.
It has to be brought by the parent organization, not the students.
I, I mean, I, just going off the words in the document, I would definitely have, like, some legal counsel review that because it flat-out says the prohibition of students and staff in organizing raffles.
I can run it by our attorney.
Yeah, I would, just, just to cover our ass.
I can give her the example of the cowplop. She will love that.
Yeah.
Well, like, it's sort of like the curriculum night raffle. Technically, that's a raffle, right?
Curriculum night, and we plan to tomorrow, I mean, or what first, I don't know what day.
Okay. So, is that, that's JJE, that one?
But I'm sorry, I...
No, it's a question. I, again, I can get that.
Yeah, JJE, Student Fundraising Activities.
Okay, so, do we want to hold that one then?
We'll hold that one.
Hold that one. All right, so, just now, now I lost track. They're in a different order than they were last week, too.
Make sure cowplop is in the minutes.
Okay, so, we're going to shelve JJE and get some more definition on that. So, it's, we're going to accept with the small edits and then GBEBC, KBE, and IKF.
Okay. Okay. And a second? Because that was a motion, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were seconding, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I guess I could. Any further discussion? Okay. So, vote to approve, just again, IKF, GBEBC, and KBE. All in favor?
Not KBE.
Oh, not KBE? Oh, that's the parent booster. All right, so, was it JJE that was the issue or the KBE?
I think it's both of them, which is doing...
Yeah, because it kind of...
All right. So, we'll back up. So, we're going to hold...
Motion to approve GBEBC.
And IKF.
IKF, which is the graduation requirement.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just to, this will be approving JV, I'm sorry, JBEBC and IKF.
GBEBC and IKF. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right.
Do we have to, do we have to vote to keep the other two still open so that we can figure stuff out?
I don't think so, right? Well, let's just hold.
Just hold them, and then the next sub, Vinnie, I have Rob, and we'll go over, and then Mark will look into the other.
Okay. And then...
Okay, yes, and then I move forward to, I move to add the following policies returning to our index and recommended by the MACSC, and they are ECAB, Access to Buildings and Grounds, KI, Visitors to School, EFBA, School and Food Nutrition Meal Modification, and KBG, Parent Advisory Councils. Is there a second?
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. These two, two policies related to school security, which was ECAB and KI, are rewritten in more detailed copies and all necessary information within one policy. Policy EFBA was developed in compliance with USDA non-discriminative regulations and describes steps necessary for applying medically necessary meal modifications. And policy KGB describes a requirement of the district's PACs, which is CPAC, EL PAC, and ML PAC, and our district is in compliance with that policy. And just a side note, we are going to hold on IK, this is not in there, but IPFE, because we're going to review it, and when it's ready for approval, so we recommend holding that policy into the district allies as it works on the standards.
All right. So, vote to approve ECAB, KI, EFBA, and KBG.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And then, just to reiterate, we're holding on IKFE?
Yes.
JJE and KBE.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, any of the other subcommittees have any updates? I don't believe so. Okay, so, at this point, Perry, did you want to talk about the...
Yeah, just one little thing. A couple of parents and one teacher now have asked if we have any plans to get either ClassWise or GoGuardian, which are, I don't, I'm sure you all know them, but it's essentially, oh, I figured you didn't. It's software that a classroom teacher has where you've assigned the teacher's students, and they have visibility into the child's screen on their device to prevent kids from playing a game when they're supposed to be taking tests, or having a Google Doc open with the entire class, and they're essentially IMing within the Google Doc. I guess it has become a larger issue since the cell phone removal, which I love, by the way, but it has come up a couple times, with parents saying, "My kid is using, is watching YouTube videos during school," and things like that. So, it has come up a couple times. I just wanted to put it out there.
No, thank you. We have talked about it, so we've talked about our admin meetings, we've talked about, you know, some, some of the real benefits to it, so we can supervise and monitor what, you know, what everyone's doing on their screen. There's a cost associated with it. It's, you know, some, some are more expensive than others, and from what I understand, too, it takes the teacher to be at their, you know, their computer to be seeing what's going on, and we know how quick kids are, so, you know, if they're moving around and they're looking at things, it becomes kind of that gotcha, trying to find out what they're doing. I think what we're looking at doing sometimes is in the classroom, they don't, they're not always on their computers. The computers come down, so they don't have them up in front of them, and if they're doing instruction, they don't need to be open. I think that's probably the most effective way. I think it's good we are one-to-one, but I think there's also some downsides to it. So, it's been discussed. I think we can continue to look at it and see, you know, what the most effective use of the technology and the cost, and to see if it's going to work, and we can talk to John Collins, who will pilot it and see how worthwhile. And I'm glad you're bringing it up because I'm sure the teachers are equally frustrated at times.
The one individual who specifically brought it to me is a teacher in another district, and she said that what she does when, just, not to, are, just as informational, is that she puts her screen on the board, and so that when she's walking around the room, she can just, like, you can see what other students are doing, as long as it's not a test or something like that, that they're, so she has all their tabs open, and she just mirrors it, she walks around the room, she does, and, you know, somebody says, "They're not supposed to be, you know," we know how they are, but just as, that's what they've opted to do so that they aren't stuck at their desk monitoring it.
Yeah, excellent.
Would that be something like, is it worth, like, having something, like, do like a demo, like, one of the providers of the software? Like one of the providers of the software? Like, you know, we can ask budgetary officials and stuff too. Cause like that's my, my, my.
Yeah. If it's beneficial.
It's kind of costly.
Yeah. We can definitely do that.
Just old man question because I don't understand why these things work. Like, can the students chat with each other from their Google screen of the day?
They open a Google Doc that they all have.
Yeah. That's, that's what I was thinking was Google chat. Cause like, I'm thinking to myself, like, what if they were taking a test and they both had Google chat open and they're just sending answers?
I guess, I guess the one big one that I keep hearing.
Well, that Eddie Q would ever shoot on a test.
Is, is a Google Doc, they, they have the Google chat, but I guess the Google Doc where they just all like, it's like a chat room.
It's smart.
It's.
And it would, it would look normalized as a Google Doc.
The whole class has access. Sorry. Their six best friends have access and they're typing to each other.